We're gonna go through, we know all board members are here, and we're gonna go ahead with the agenda. I know proposed 2022 budget estimate, CPM plan, bus replacements plan, and operation plan. Michigan Ringer, you can have them out at the stage.
Thank you, Mr. President.
She's getting to talk too much.
It'll be, it'll hold that hour. Alright, so I'm gonna start with you because you know we've got two people that are sitting here that has not probably heard a school budget presentation.
Try that test.
But you certainly haven't heard mine. So that is a throw, have you heard mine? You have three minutes. So I'm gonna try to make it as painless as possible, but we do, we know this is the second one that I'm doing with Greater Clark. The first one, we have half, we had a mission and a lot of revelation and where we were at. Where we are now, where we're going is gonna be a big, play a big part of all of that. There's a couple of things I want you to know. Remember, I'm always preaching the unification of a board that stands with or superintendent. We take you places you've never drawn before. We had an intern inside our district who goes to Western Kentucky that came and shadowed our facilities management, management team. Reason I'm telling you this, his name is Ryan. And he, before he departed, he said he wanted to tell me one more thing. He said, "I drove 5,100 miles for Greater Clark County schools," and he said he loved every mile of it. So I just kinda wanna let you know the impression that we're making upon your own minds, even at the university level.
Did we reimburse him for that?
So I just want you to start off with that, and that just kinda gets us to in the mood of why we are here and what we do. So the other clarifying thing is I'm gonna throw a lot of acronyms at you, so I kinda wanna go through those real quick. You can note them in your book, these are your books, you can write them, do whatever you need to do on them. I encourage it because this is the work session, and any corrections or changes, you know, we have another presentation at the next board meeting where I have asked permission to advertise. But I am heavily governed, as much as I love you all, and I report to superintendent and you, I also have to report and adhere to several of the divisions within the state of Indiana. One being the Indiana Department of Education Division of Finance. They're the ones that actually send us the money from the state level and require so many reports, reporting. A lot of my colleagues are obligated to the Indiana Department of Education naturally. But there is a division of finance that I do have to adhere to. There is a division called DUEF, the Distress Unit Appeals Board. They monitor every single school. I do report to you those fiscal indicators. And as you are well aware, we were on their radar and we had to make some serious decisions to get off that radar. Okay? The DLGF, Department of Local Government Finance, they're the ones that actually bless all public entities' budgets. They look at what we submitted, tax rates, what we're asking for, for the property tax side of it. State board accounts, then actually go through and take a look at all of their information. They make the rules, here you see treasures up to your treasures in the school districts. So aside from that little group, I report to the board, superintendent, and my team, and the building corp. I have an other board I do report to, and that's the building corp because I'm trustee there. So just kinda let you know that I have to know those rules and get that handshaking together. It's a big orchestrated thing, and we have a lot of conversations amongst my team mainly and a lot with superintendent. So whenever I'm doing the budget, I just kinda walk in and say, "Here's this, here's this, here's this." So that way, you know, he knows I'm fulfilling that mission to get us where we need to be. Our goals from the last board meeting, I'm sorry, the budget session that we did, we set some high standards. And these standards that we aim to meet. We were correcting the debt payments, remember? We had talked about how those were all over the place and we needed to levy where the money, like here that they were due, and pre-levy, right? Pay bills in a timely fashion, increase cash balance, stay for a $1.10 tax rate, no longer utilize TAWs, and correct deficit financing. And today I can tell you you've met all those goals. Now, does that mean that we are totally out of the woods? No, we've increased our cash balance, but not to the level that's expected from the DUEF. They have to set forth out to the state what those levels should be. And we're looking at eight to 10% of your budget is where you need to be. Otherwise, they'll still keep a pulse on you. Yes?
Is it okay if I ask while you're talking?
Absolutely.
I thought you said, "Is it okay if I ask while you're talking?"
While you're talking.
Okay, so we know that the DUEF, we run the DUEF straight on. And so as we show signs of improvement, how often do you actually speak to them and do you try to just people profile them?
No, I don't people profile them on anything.
I was gonna say, I can't imagine you can.
Right, so once I got through this budget process, I had already prepared a very large presentation to send off to them. So, you know, there's a key point in time where I will send that to them to let them know our improvements. That should help us with that process. Then that all they would be doing is looking at the traditional indicators as they do every other school. So, and I can tell you that if our, you know, they look at your enrollment, they look at your property value growth, they look at your cash balances. Those are the three key areas that they look. So if there's any concerns there, you know, they might come and say, "Hey, we're a little bit concerned about this. What is your plan?" So, but we, in the submission, I put in the plan. Now, if everything is approved, I will be putting in the five-year plan. I will be putting in what all we have going on in the district. So I don't always say it beforehand and then do a second update. They knew that we were heading, if they knew that we were headed to have this major shift. So we do know that there is a shift in the dynamics at the DUEF. Courtney, you've met, there's no longer issues with the DOA, so she's not too far. But we do have a replacement, that information, you know, should be coming out. And he is a school person, so they would know. They know the school's in town, so that's fantastic. Kinda let you know as a broad projection, because remember, earlier tonight I did state about my concern with the emergency carriers that have been brought forth, mainly employing within the district. So our operations, I'm gonna give you a range of 2.2 million up to $3 million with your cash balance. Remember, December 31st, you had about $9,000 in here. From '19. So from, in a six-month period from July 120 to December 31st of '20, we went from $100,000 to $1 million. And this is the same with both funds, almost like 94 or so. And then I reported to you in June what that was, and we're gonna see that here, where you were, where we're at, where we're going. And in education fund, about $2.2 million is where we're sitting. And in that, then said, we had talked about that GEO bond, and we've talked about ESSR, ESSR, three mainly. We approved that contract. But I wanna tell you from the American School and University, with those funds, this is how schools across the nation are handling those funds. 82% are doing HVAC air quality, so you're right on it. 74% are doing cleaning and maintenance, 69% is technology and broadband infrastructure, 62% is counseling, 56% is PPE and supplies, 53% is building envelopes and upgrades, and 51% is classroom design and furniture selection. We did that really with all the things that we're doing in this district. We did, we were in each category. So not just ESSR 2, but with our grant writing. And if you recall, last year, I said we needed to lean in on our grants, and Dr. Hart, which has done amazing job of that. Here's your key times, this is your 21, I mean, in '21 for your '22 budget timeline. Tonight is your work session. On the 24th, next board, I will do a very short version of the presentation for the public again and ask permission to advertise. On the 14th, you'll have a public hearing. And on the 28th of September, you will have adopted the budget. Are you all ready?
Yeah, everybody's so ready.
Here for you, always in this book, we talk about, we've heard these things. Well, you're building all this, we just talked about it tonight, how could we not pay teachers more? There's definite rules with Indiana Code sitting right here that you can utilize at any time to tell anybody who asks a question, what is that fund for, what is operations for, and what is education for? And remember, your education is heavily governed, and why wouldn't it be? Because the legislative is constantly making these decisions, do they not, Mark Felix, about how money in the state budget's gonna happen, right? We get more than 50% of that budget, so they definitely have their claws inside of that. And so the education fund is well-defined, and that money comes from the state as strictly based on enrollment. We have to be attractive, we have to offer, we have to be, we have to inspire, we have to make sure our kids get here and are in school. This is the heartbeat of the district, the education fund. Okay? So here's your study. Clearly see, you know, this is your rainy day fund. Do you understand why that rainy day went down? Do we remember? Because we had to pay our self-insurance fund. So that money, you can see exactly when that happened. You also can see here the two lines, may not see where they nearly ended together. Okay, so we're fair and equitable, that's for sure. But you can see how there becomes financing just by the line, a few lines. So in the period of time of one year, right, you're able to get your education fund up to $1,075, your operations fund up to $1,083, about rainy month bar, we are paying back the money to the rainy day fund for the amount that it borrowed to supplement the self-insurance fund. All right? We still owe another $1,600,000 to that rainy day fund. So you either can get it out of rainy day, or you would've gotten it out of education operation. We share that right now and place that there. Even though there's more salaries out of education than operation. And next, we went through this process here where you could see these funds that I've been targeting all along to let you know kinda where we stand. We saw June 30th balances, remember, education fund go over $7 million, but I always want to remind you that we have a TAW that's still outstanding that has to be paid within the 12 months, so it'll be paid in December. And for education fund, that's $5.50, so projection about $2.3 million would be in the ending balance of June if I was to pay it right now, right? And then in operations, we have $1.487, we owe 8.3 million in TAWs, which leaves a $3.1 million in June if I was to pay that. And of course, the rainy day is not changing at this time. So that's your history. Now, we're gonna go into, the only way we can generate revenue is our number of kids. This is the part that I always hope I'm wrong on. I'll be the first to admit. This is the part that makes everybody nervous, but we know how to deal with it either. You can see over history, the two sets of counts that has to occur, September and February. Count number one is in September, right? So we'll be approaching that very soon. Here it is, when I started this process, is at the end of May, beginning of June, right? So I take a look at history again, through all the agencies that I just told you, that I talked to, along with the Indiana School Business Officials and the Indiana School Board Association, has said to attack this not fearfully. That's all I mean, tell me. If I could endorse not to be fearful, I would go for it. Because we need to make sure that we are trying to give this district everything it needs, because the promise and the mission is to make sure everything gets into the education fund because we need it in our classroom for teaching. And I'll come back to that in a moment. So this budget was built on $10,270. I've been telling superintendent $10,200, but I think it was actually $10,270. But if we do, here's what will happen. If we exceed that, then we have the appropriation to handle it and do our expenses, right? If we fall short of that, we will still probably get this appropriation. And I'll just hold this so I don't have to go and get additional appropriation. You know how I kinda feel about that, right? Because there's a cost to it, it's not necessary if we don't have to, right? Again, I'm gonna also revisit additional appropriation because our operations fund, a little bit different, okay? So all the numbers and projections are based off $10,270. But keep in mind, keep in mind, when I put that number into the formula, because you look for foundation, complexity, all the things, I also have to put in a projection for the February count. And as you can see, the blue is your February count. It always falls short of what your September account is, right? So the formula has to adjust, so it's an average in there, and it adjusts down for you. So the revenue projections that are coming to me right now with this estimate will take that into consideration. But I text this aggressively as I can. These are estimates, when the count name is in, am certified, that will be our revenue, right? And by the way, September 17th of '21 and February 1st of '22 count. Disney did. So we've got a lot to beat. This is where I can show our teachers who have information in hand about funding education. So this is a, this is a fantastic graph here. In time, what was happening is that at the State House, they were saying we're giving more and more money to education. Remember that, you got cards and everything. So as we've shown our teachers union, you know, yes, that sounds fantastic, but how they were doing it was just shifting the money from one category to another. So you got complex kids, complex kids are free and reduced kids. We've changed that a little bit now, right? A free and reduced kids, you would have a formula that would come to a dollar figure per student plus your foundation amount, and that's your total amount, that's the white bars there that you got per student. If you take a look there, you see how slow that little blue, at the top of the blue, that's your foundation, how slow that was growing, but see how fast the complexity was going down? That was the shift. They were just taking it from one bucket, putting it into another. Except, I would give credit where credit's due, this year. This year. This year, the complexity went down slightly, but our foundation went up. So you're gonna see that we are getting a little bit more per student. So yes, they stood behind what they were saying. Here we are, and now if we, that's why we need to make sure our kids are in school so we can give them accounting, because this will support the foundation of our district. So as you can see, the two last columns in your book, and you're gonna see that at a certain point, we're gonna get to where you're gonna have more detail in your book than looks up on the screen, we did that last year a little bit. Then as you can see on page seven, you will see the revenue that you received in '20 was $72 million. In '21, we're still estimating because you have the adjustment for the count of February. So this, this doesn't get short up until the end of the year. So you know your true revenue is, so I'm not just reporting, you know, your revenue for, from the state. I'm also reporting any miscellaneous revenue that may come in on. So for the '22 budget, with the aggressive attack on it, with logic, we're estimating to receive about $79 million. Now, rainy month bar, that's how much goes into that fund. But unfortunately, that fund doesn't get to keep from that. So what has to happen is that there, in its time, we had what was called a general fund, and you may hear that even to this day, people call general fund. General fund took care of all of our teachers, all, everybody, everything. Supplies, everything, instructional and operational. And then they split that up, right? So you had the general fund all instructional, and then you get your operational here, and they split that out. Remember, we did this little exercise with the dancing around here on that. That portion right there, you take out of your revenues in education fund. Does that make sense? So I took a base amount of how much those operations were back when that happened. So we haven't seen an increase here, even though our expenses have increased, and taken that and put that in operations, leaving this here for our instructional, this fourth mission. Also in operations, they added what you knew was capital projects, transportation, and bus replacement. But remember, the operations fund is hit with circuit breaker so intensely. For the education fund, I'm advertising a budget for $67.8 million, which is about $2 million more than I did last year. That's because we have acted aggressively, but logically. And the question always becomes, how much money are you transferring? How that education fund more to the operations fund? And you know, the state says, there's no law, there's no rule. They say you should do 15% or less, right? And in some cases, the schools, huh, that means nothing because they've lost all the property taxes, right? Due to circuit break. This school district, I've tried to stay underneath that, and our target clearly is about 12% last year. Now we're at 11.97%, which is simply the 9.5 million coming out of there that belonged to that portion of the general fund that represented operations. Take that out, divide that into how much you're asking for, and that's how you figure out what your percentage is. So we're under the 15% threshold, but if we ever have to get there, what does that technically mean? Technically means I stand up here and tell you that we're gonna go to 15% in a while. And it usually is that if the circuit breaker's so intense, like the expenses in operations has grown so much, this is our only source of revenue. Which we all know, right? The other thing that I do need to make sure that you understand what we're dealing with, remember all those agencies, let's say we put in some stipulations. We'll give you this money inside of the formula, but a stipulation is that if you're a full-time teacher, which means you have to be in a classroom at least 50% of the time, or more, or strictly on a temporary contract. Are you filling in for a temporary leave? Temporary contract. If you are teaching middle and almost half-time, this doesn't apply, doesn't apply. So out of all our teachers that are in the classroom, what 50% of the time, our temporary teachers add together, has their salary, their base salary, not DCA, not coaching, not mentoring, not all the other stuff that they do for us, count. Only the base salary, and has to add up and be at least 45% of the foundation money that you get out of the formula. This goes with that fiscal year '22. Glad to tell you, right now, at the end of this last year, June 31st of '21, we were sitting at 50% of our formula goes to teacher salaries that follow just those two categories. Remember, we're not counting anything else that we're paying. Now, believe me, I love our teachers, I'm not gonna ask them for 5% back, we'll just like to keep paying, right? Right, Mark? But we're, just those two categories has us at 50%. So I'm confident that we'll week that corrects it in, and that our, you know, everything we're doing with our teachers, you know, we'll pass through the hurdle test and make sure that we are at the foundation amount. Does anybody have any questions on that? Inside your book on page eight, I'm sorry, nine, you'll see the detail by program, so the total of the appropriation, $457.8 million. I also included inside your booklet on page 10, and I will show us some ramblings through page 14, how you spent the money in the education fund. So if you look at page 10, the education fund, the 2019 expenses, you saw that we were at 95% salary benefits in instruction and 5% for everything else, which means students, supplies, and everything. If you start moving forward, look at 20, and we're gonna go to 21. 21, right now in our, in our education fund, we commit 96% to salary benefits to our instructional commitment and 4% for supplies, services, anything else. So when we do transfer resolutions for appropriations, the teachers, you know, we start off based on, you know, if I'm looking at 21, remember, that's my start bar, right? And I'm seeing I'm spending 96% salary benefits, and I'm spending 4% in staff and in supplies when it happens, guess what happens? I'm gonna look at the 4% and the 96%, right? So that's how that goes. However, because of the request of it coming in, I've had to change the appropriation, so I got more appropriation, and I'm shifting in more into the supplies because of the demand from the teachers. So when you do look at page 14 in your book, you'll see that paradigm shift. Down to 90% salary benefits, does that mean I'm taking salaries and benefits from our teachers? No, I'm just putting in, when I put in more appropriation, I get more on the supply. Because of the request of it coming in, to you, to me, to the superintendent, right? So I did that change. Which means 8% goes to services, supplies, and those kind of things. So hopefully, we'll have those teachers ready to rock and roll with what they need next year. And we'll summarize all of these funds here at the end. Alright, so now, on page 15, here's the description of the operations fund. Told you about general fund, operations section, and all these funds. So here's a nice quick sheet, so you understood how we got there. This happened in 2018. You can see the average expenses that we were spending at that time on each fund. The interesting thing that you should look at is way back in '18, you had a $6 million allocation of capital projects. But remember, we're rocking a $5 million circuit breaker. This is the fund that carries that burden. So this size district, that means that you have to take a look at how do you get your capital in check. And that is why we have to go to debt service to do so. Because this is the fund that receives all that circuit breaker impact tax caps. So here's your value of your home, minus any deductions gives you the net value. That net value times 1% equals X. If we add up all the funds and the tax rate to $1.10, times your net assessed value divided by 100, equals less than that 1%? Then that's what you get. If that $1.10 times your assessed value divided by 100 is more than that gap, the gap's all you pay. Hence, the circuit breaker. Right, this is the gap, this is the gap, from that to here, and that's the circuit. Does that make sense now? So the operations fund, because we have that right here. We get our revenues from property tax, license of excise tax, and the transfer from the education fund. So right now, I'm able to add some $20 million, $800,000, $890,000 in the, actually, budget. But you notice the revenues are way more, 4.8 million. And I'm trying, that you'd have to take that revenue minus the anticipated circuit breaker amount. That's how come I can only get you there. When we can get more revenues into that operations fund, I can bolster that up. If you're just activating, it's been very hard over the last two years to take those grants to buy buses. That is a major impact. We, we will be going up to the edge on this because we've had to do capital improvements. We will be going up to the edge on this because we've had to do capital improvements out of this fund, which I told you doesn't handle room for it. So why we're going to go to the debt side, why we're going to do GOV, right? For those emergency repairs. So if we have to come and get additional appropriation to support the end of this year's budget, because we only got nineteen million here. How this should work, because I didn't put it into the budget to say, I'm anticipating additional appropriation. I don't want to do that, I'm trying to maximize you as far as I can, so I never have to do additional appropriation. So how this would work is very simple. Most of our emergency repairs, of course, will be handled by the GOV. However, if we keep going with other things that we need, the DLGF needs a bunch of pluses, and I have to go here. Okay? I only have so much appropriation, that's the authority to spend. So appropriation is simply the authority to spend two things with that. Doesn't mean you're allowed, you spend it, you have to make sure you have the cash to do so. So we shifted you around here, remember, I said we're going to have two point two to three million dollars? We'll have the cash, but we won't have the appropriation. Because we made the cuts, we did the reduction plan, and that's how come we're going to have the cash. So if I don't have enough appropriation to handle these expenses, I have permission to the board to say, let me tell you where those appropriations are. They're sitting in rainy day, the appropriations, forget about the cash, don't even think about that. That's where the authority to spend is. I would pay that out on a rainy day, which subsequently lowers the cash, but I'll bring it right back up with the cash out operations. Do you understand that? Do I need to say that again? Can you visualize that? Yes, I cannot have enough appropriations to finish the year in operations, right? There is always appropriate, every year, every budget, I do appropriation for rainy day with no intention of spending it unless there's an emergency. So let's say I'm at zero, and then I have appropriation in rainy day. Appropriation, the authority to spend. But remember, I just have to tell you, I said zero appropriation, I have three million dollars in operations, okay? So I don't have the authority to spend that three million. Let me say that again. Appropriations go down to zero, that's the permission, I get the permission.
Is that him?
In the operations, okay? But we have three million dollars in cash here. Because I don't have the permission to spend it, because way back eighteen months ago, this is what we asked for, and now we've got some things going on. But I got you the position to build your cap. In the rainy day fund, I say, give me some appropriation in case there's an emergency. Because I just have cash in there, there's no tax impact, nothing. I don't ever ask for more appropriation than cash in there. So if I was going to ask for anything, I'd ask for two point nine million, you know, that's the cash in there, and that would be it. If I don't need it, then I tell the DLGF, no, lower that, make it zero, and next year I'll ask for two point nine. Makes sense? So now I have a balance in rainy day, in appropriation, the authority to spend. Zero, three million operations, and let's say I need to spend five hundred thousand dollars. I have the appropriation sitting in rainy day, which we would write the payment, whatever, pay the bill, five hundred thousand dollars on rainy day, which does hit the cash, but then I just bring that three point eight million and put it right back into rainy day. Because I can't get you more, I can't get you more, right? And you don't know that until the end of the year. Right now, all signs show that we'll be okay. But in the event that happens, you have to do all these processes to be ready to rock and roll by November. Well, shoot, December is a big money place. And I never want to do that because that's when I get more property taxes, and that's when I get more of everything else in, so that way I can see where we're at. Proper way to do it, it's the least expensive way, it's a very well monitored way to handle that. And I show you where the cash is all the time, so that way you know that if it goes down, it'll go right back up. Saves the district money too, because of cost to advertise, the cost to go do it for additional appropriations, so I can put it in, I'll probably say try to. But I have to go through you to do that, okay? Now, in your book, again, you will see the detailed programs on page seventeen. In your book. When you get to page eighteen, nineteen, twenty, or twenty-one, the areas I want you to look at is the June thirtieth of twenty-one. All right, before we look at, help us with that. June thirtieth, twenty-one, this is the breakdown by progress by adjutant. In here, you can see that we were hitting the operations fund forty-seven, forty-eight percent rounded up for salary benefits and fifty-two percent for all other expenses. Don't forget this where you pay your insurance, your fuel, you know, all your bus contracts, all of your property insurances, that's why that other is pretty happy. If you continue on to page twenty-two, you will see the paradigm shift. Because you reduced in operations because of cost became excessive, more than just what we initially thought through our outsourcing process, facilities management. So now you are at sixty-eight percent all other, thirty-two percent salary benefits, right? That way you have control over those processes and cost reductions if ever needed, cost evaluations. We've already seen the cost savings with what we have done. Because remember, I said, I projected two point two to three million dollars in operations, and you started off with a hundred thousand, so that's how you build that. So this graph right here combines both the education, operations fund, so you can see where our money is going. That is on page fifteen in your book. Now, in your book, we're just going to kind of look through this because there's a little bit of debate with the DLGF. This is on page twenty-five. Believe me, I'm not going to repeat every single page because there's only seventy pages in the book.
If not, I'll just slide down.
No, no, you're in your book, remember, we have the gap in your book, page twenty-five, when we're looking at the top.
I'll go forward and look.
Yeah, for you, you're still up there.
I am. I'm on page seventy-eight.
Everybody wants me to be on page seventy-eight. So this is the capital projects plan. Remember, I'm indicating to you that we do not have a lot of money to invest in capital projects. Very plain and simple, and hence why we go to the debt service. However, you are required, with any anticipated purchases that are over ten thousand dollars, you should report. So page twenty-five has an estimated need in there of security cameras, HVAC upgrades, fencing, technology, computers, right? Here is the almighty debate, if you go to page twenty-six, it has your year one plan on there. I am still debating with the DLGF to say, if I'm bonding for the, that's why I'm putting in my plan. And he said that we have to disclose all of that, so gladly disclose that, show them some of the things that we're going to be doing in the future. Do not be shocked if this thing gets advertised like this, and we don't do this work under capital projects. You know when we're going to be doing it, including the HVAC upgrades. You know, if I have funds that, believe me, believe me, when something needs to be done in the district, they do come and ask, and God has this money, and have all of this money reserved, but I know as long as I disclose it on the plan, I can justify it as capital charge. But I will be going to the debt service side, either if it qualifies for the bond issuance of the building court that we're getting ready to do the traditional, or the GOV on through the formula. So we're debating this a little bit, but I am honest about what we're going to be spending, and it's there. You also have in your book a list of all of our properties, and you'll notice the two are highlighted. This is as of June thirtieth, we have these two buildings for the quarter at first point. And we'll stay there until next budget, whatever that is. All of this information is sitting inside the twenty million dollars that I have been asking for for operations. In the book on page twenty-eight is your bus replacement plan. It's over twelve years, but we're only required to show the five. So you're going to see quite a bit that we're not going to be replacing in our own buses for oh, couple of years, right? You're going to have a set coming along in twenty-five. However, one of the corrections that we did make last year, if you keep going down to page thirty-three, we now list our contracted drivers, and we do pay them every year. That changes, even changing tonight, so you know, of course, this, we worked on this all summer, waited as long as I could to get it in this book. This is what we will be submitting, because it's far beyond what, you know, you have to put in a plan. But we did correct that, and we will continue to keep updating this list all the time. I, if, it does not make an impact of what I'm being advertising for the board, but at least you have this list, and we'll continue to back to that. We have the bond, if you want to see the total replacement cost for our buses, cost each year. If you look on page thirty-three A, you see I was changing right up to last minute. At page thirty-three, they go to page thirty-four, and then like thirty-three A, and then we're projecting to spend two point two million dollars on our buses and our contracted drivers at this point. Now, if you want to catch up in your book to the screen, it's page thirty-six, and we're going to talk about the rainy day. How this gets funded is by transfers. Remember, we owe this fund six hundred thousand dollars. We anticipate doing resolution of three hundred thousand out of both major funds to get that over. I know it's the whole burden, although our largest, our largest payroll population is in the education fund. I equally distributed that out of those two funds into rainy day. I do not go crazy on the appropriations, right? We have two point nine million as we know it as of June thirtieth, and you see I'll be asking for one point nine million. But every year, if you don't spend those appropriations, you do have to do a resolution to reduce those appropriations. Otherwise, they just think it keeps going. And I don't mean carry that forever because next year I may want to go less, or I may want to go more. And I never go more than what my cash balance is. So this particular year, I will be presenting to you a resolution to reduce that rainy day because that's a bottom which I asked for last year, and I'll be reducing that. But I'm leaving some appropriation there in case we need it, just like what we had in discussion. So I asked for one point eight million, we leave about eight hundred thousand dollars in the rainy day in appropriation. Make sure you understand what I'm saying there, hope. Do we? Trace that because that was the one that's been pulled for. So I'm reducing it so I can maximize the next year because I have the cash to do it in case of an emergency. So what I've talked about maximizing the next year, doesn't make sense that you reduce it to maximize the next year, but maybe this fund can help us if we're visualizing two point nine million sitting there. And if I want to say, quote appropriation it for two point nine million, I better have zero over here. Otherwise, it'll keep carrying. So if I ask for two point nine and I have some left over here, it keeps carrying. I wouldn't get approved because it'll show more than the cap I have available. So by reducing, maximize in the next year. So that's why I'm taking one million dollars, I don't suspect we need it. So we should be five thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars. We could add eight hundred thousand dollars to this advertised budget. It's still like I said, we passed the limit, so we will ask just for one point nine million, and if it may need. Plus, we understand about reversion at rainy day if we need to. In your book, but of course, you will see the detail, I just put it in prison alias because we don't know what we need it for. But I will tell the board what we need for if we need a fund commission you want now. Okay, I'm almost there. And those are two biggest ones, these two are your other two biggest ones. Let's look at the bottom here, let's look at pension debt really quick. Pension debt, for those that don't know, is that the state put regulation, imagine that, that all school districts of the state of Indiana could not carry unfunded liability. And the unfunded liability is in the format of teachers that have started with school districts prior to nineteen ninety-five, and they have retirement plans, either in the form of severance, either in the form of insurance, either in the form of dues given to them, all kinds of things. And no one had enough money to put that away in a little nuts and prank over here. So that way, when the teacher did retire, we just pulled that out of the bank and gave to the teacher. And it's case that we could no longer do that. So what we had to quickly do way back then, I'm not saying I was even born then, but I'm just saying that. I know, well, I'm real type of pension because I said that. What they had to do is they had to go to each teacher union and negotiate a bailout on that process, right? Because the teachers, they had that commitment, they were near the retirement. There was a provision where they, we borrowed money, we required to borrow money, which is the bond. And we had to pay teachers who were prior ninety-five, getting their retirement, of course, they hit that obligation. Plus those that had some storage in that area, meaning I may have had some days there, I may have had something. So did teachers lose out? Maybe there was a few years, a few, they had a few years, maybe they did lose out. The premise was, is to continue to try to come up with a mechanism for unfunded liability at that time. So subsequently, this money came into the bank from a bond, we paid all the teachers out. Theoretically, you should have had money left, but what ended up happening is that the obligation for this retiree was too big to borrow because there's always been a maximum limit. I don't know if everybody realizes that, we have a tax gap, but schools always had a maximum limit on taxing, on borrowing, on everything. So we've always had a maximum limit, so we couldn't get enough to pay the teachers. So then, then of course, your general fund was kicking in to take care of that. And that's, that catapulted, that started, that started the process of not having enough. So if you were one of the few lucky schools that did, was able to borrow, have a max capacity borrow, we could set those funds aside as people retired and you could end that, then it was great. But that didn't happen everywhere, and I suspected it didn't happen because we don't have a retirement fund. So we've already done that acceleration through that, and we do offer some things to our teachers, which do, that does come right out of the education fund, straight up. So if they are due repay days and those kind of things, that comes out of the education fund. That's why we ask, please tell us by April first, so I can plan for it, make up for it if I can at any point in time. So that's why we ask, one of many reasons why we ask to know by April first. Subsequently, that one came in, so there's a bond there, and we're getting close to paying that off. Woo-hoo, I paid one off. Remember, I went forward a little, whatever thing went on, yes. It's a great feeling. This one goes off in twenty twenty-four. I'd sound a little bit familiar, right? I'd sound a little bit familiar because when we, see here, which way go back. Yeah, here we stop, because I'll keep going. As you, you'll know that if we pay it off in twenty-four, you know, we have to provide your plan. And there's definitely something that's coming in where, you know, we're looking at, how come we could borrow all this money? Here's this one example, that's the debt bond. You know, it's about one point two million dollars to pump out, right? So we look at twenty-three, this pays off in twenty-four, it takes you that line to build that school, and that's why we can, we can do it, that's one reason. There's other debt that will constantly fall off. On your other debt, I don't know if I can back those here on this.
She's hiding the opposite of it, even if you slide the future or roll up.
I'll just slide. So you can see where our debt is at. Neither one of these funds are subject to circuit breaker, unless you're over the age of sixty-five, that's the only thing that will apply to you. So we do have a circuit breaker, in fact, it's obvious call, and it has to be related to income. That's one of those deductions off your assessed value, so your property tax. How about doing that tag, really? How about doing that timing?
Beautiful.
Huh?
You're older.
Am I? Like, if you're timing on this, it would be like, we're older.
It's like 13.
What we, we started at 7.
7:25. 7:23 we started.
We got two minutes.
Laura, I have a question. Didn't the state?
All right, here we go.
Didn't the state do something about these, either the debt service or the pension debt at one time, saying that we could spend? They did something that allowed us to have more money in our general fund.
They did pension fund. Because in the general fund, you have the obligation for retirement. And so they said we shouldn't have that unfunded liability. So that's why you had to go out and borrow the money and pay that all off. Pay, you know, pay the teachers over retiring. Pay them, buy them out with the days or whatever so they just, you know, still work and move forward.
Yeah, I was thinking it was, the state legislature was using whatever they did about that fund and allowing us to do something in it as their give in on raises. You know, you're going to have this extra money. There, I guess I'm, I'm.
Well, believe me, if I knew about extra money to give raises, I wouldn't have been on the front.
Yeah, so like 34 years ago.
Maybe I wasn't.
The state legislature. I don't know. Go ahead.
I, I've not had much push in on that. The only thing that I've had is that we've increased combination.
She's talking about the pension debt that was paid down.
Oh, I think, oh. Oh, yeah, that's right. So, so there's a percentage of term that we do calculate as an employer against our, our salaries. And they did pay that at a certain portion of time for that to go to the teachers.
They used that as a raise, they said.
Correct. Well, that was a one-time payment. You know, so, you know, I don't know what you did here, but what I did at my other school is the only option I had was to stipend on just that portion. That's all I had to do. I mean, I gave them raises. I was, you know, they were normal raises, but I couldn't, I couldn't match that.
It's kind of like smoking mirrors.
Yeah, yeah. So it was a one-time stipend. It was savings to that fund because I didn't have to pay for it. So my teachers got it as a stipend because it wasn't going to be a continued situation, which we knew, we knew. I think I'm doing it. I would have, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you.
So this right here, your debt, debt fund, which, let me tell you that is, has increased significantly because good news, our assessed value, remember last year? It went up 8.1%. Stiefel is seeing significant jumps in assessed value. So significant that they have to coach me up because, you know, I'm always conservative of what's coming in to make sure that I got that whole consideration in if we jump upwards of 15%. In this presentation, I use 3.5%, which is what policy analysts has done. But see, they're seeing other counties come through. So I had to find a nice mixture through that process. Here's all your current outstanding debt without what's coming down the bank. So you can see where those things pay off. So the combination of keeping a dollar 10 is increased property values and debt fund amount. Here's your list. This is the big one right here. At the bottom, you can see that that page is 45. Here's been your history of assessed values. See how it was low, coming up high? And the property tax going up and down, up and down, up and down. We want consistency in the mission. Last year, remember, we advertised way above a dollar 10. The reason, the reason is because we wanted to make sure that we had enough consideration for growth. Because usually if the assessed value is low, your property tax is high. Right? If your assessed value was high, your property tax is low. So what I've got to do is hit 3.5%. Should get me near higher advertisement. You always advertise high. So if this is growing, I didn't want that to go too low because we got to maintain that 10. So I had to ship with both up to a dollar 40. And what happens is when that assessed value comes in, the new rate is there and it will be higher than a dollar 10. And I took it down to a dollar 10 because I have a dollar figure inside the debt that is astronomical. So that way I can be ready for that increase in assessed value. Does that make sense? All right, here is a summary of your budget. In the education fund, again, we are advertising 67.8 million. Operations is 20 million, 890,000. Debt advertisement is 25 million, 281. Pension debt is 1.261. And rainy day is 1.9. You will see in the far right of your revenue sources where this money comes from to support the revenues I'll be advertising. Of course, this is the advertisement. And now the final say so, the DLGF, Department of Local Government Finance, as the final jurisdiction. So if you look at the bottom, 2021, actual rates equals the dollar 10. In 2022, we're advertising a dollar 4 and that will be a dollar 10. As you can kind of see the consistency, it will, the majority of the reduction will come in the debt up there to bring us down to a dollar 10. Prior to circuit breaker, we could get 17 million dollars in our operations. And I have to take that down by 5 to build the budget. So that's kind of where we're coming at in, in as far as our property tax revenue. Guaranteed that we can get you at a dollar 10. Showing you right here, I got a big reserve in that debt service, which will handle new bond for 21 and the GO bond. Because I knew a lot of it ahead of time. I promised you if I get you where, or before. That was my promise. That was point blank, ask that. So we'll get you right to the dollar 10. And we'll be able to fix your buildings. Emergency, air quality, we'll be at the top of the nation with them doing those things. We have made cost reduction plans right in this ship. Buy this unit occasionally, this leadership, buy all the buy-in that everybody's done here. So hopefully that you could peruse this book. The last is all of the budget form I have to fill out. There's always the executive summary that's in there that's pretty honest and truthful. Tell you about the conditions of our buildings. The things that we've seen. Some of the things that, you said the mission is the dollar 10. Some of the things I told you what you accomplished this last year was the goals. Our goals for the next year is to continue building our cash balance because all that does is give us opportunity. Even if we get excessive cash balance, that gives us another year to do what we need to do. If it's in operations to fix our buildings or push it back into the construction side of our, of our classrooms, which is what's super intense mission. Now, mind you, it takes a little time to get there. Right? As you can see, we've only gone from 100,000 dollars up to this point in the one year. But that took a lot of cost reductions. We're not off, off the heat yet because we continuously will build that cash balance. You definitely remember the areas that you want to be at in rainy day is about 12 million dollars. You know, you got three. Where you want to be in operations is at least five. Keep growing and they have to go up, right? At least 5 million to cover your gap. And then you have to be in 6.5. Now, should be 6.7, but I'm going to give us 6.5. Even if I got you a budget of 7 million, we're going to start at 6.5 because that's where we do the right of the standard. Say, hey, let's set that goal. You got two. Do you understand? We still have a little bit of work to do to make sure we remain efficient. And it will build. The more kids we get, the more built we get. Are there any questions? I didn't dance for you, but you knew I wasn't born in 1995. That's the message tonight, right? You know that you're at the top of the nation and along with the others that are doing the right thing. You fit all your goals. You know all the agencies that govern me. You know, you know that you made an impact on a college student. So you know that you made an impact on our kids here. So that's all I got for you.
Our Mrs. Sivin.
You started. I'm missing something. No, we have a question. We're good. We feel pretty schooled up. We got plenty of voting up the tune right now, but.
I'll send my question to the email.
Do that. All right, well, I need a motion.
Motion. Second. I'm moving adjourned.
Second.
Almost in favor.
Aye.
From the vote. Thank you.